Order. Welcome, everyone. Today is Wednesday, March 2nd. It is 7:30 PM. Welcome to the regular City Commission Meeting of the City of West Miami. If we could all rise for the invocation. This evening it will be by Major Pete Delgado. Thank you, Major.
Good evening. Lord God, we ask you to hold the people of Ukraine deep in your heart. Protect them, we pray, from violence, from political gamesmanship, and from abuse. Give, we pray, the nations of the world the courage and the wisdom to stand up for justice, and the courage to dare to care generously. Lord, we also ask that you continue to bless our city and its residents, our elected officials, city administration, and all of the employees. Lastly, we ask that you watch over our military service members, law enforcement officers, firefighters, and all first responders, so that they may return home safely every day. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Major. Mrs. Gonzalez, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Roll call. Mayor Rhonda Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón. Not present.
He will be, he just called. He'll be a couple of minutes late, but he will be here.
Commissioner Candy de Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanis is excused this evening, Madam Mayor. Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. At this time, Madam Clerk, I would like to take New Business Agenda Item A out of order. It is a first reading, and I know there's no comment on the first reading, but we have Ms. Monica Barnes from Florida City Gas who's here, and she drove a really long way to be here, so I want to take this first. Monica, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I know that there's no discussion, as you said. However, this ordinance deals with the renewal of the franchise agreement, and so we've been in conversation with Monica Barnes, representing the company. As we know it, it's City Gas Company, and our city attorney, we've worked on this draft agreement for your consideration, and I would encourage for the city clerk to read the heading as customary, and that we do not open discussion until the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. And again, this is a first reading, so there is no, there is no discussion. Madam Clerk, please read item, New Business Agenda Item A, please.
Yes. 11, Under New Business Agenda Items, Item 11A, First Reading. This item was postponed at the February 16, 2022, Commission Meeting. In ordinance of the City of West Miami, Florida granting to pivotal utility holdings, DBA Florida City Gas, its successors and assigns an non-inclusive gas franchise for a term of 30 years, imposing provisions and conditions relating thereto, providing for monthly payment of a franchise fee to the city, providing for adoption of representations, repealing all ordinance in conflict, providing a separability clause, providing for an effective date.
I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
Call the vote.
Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
3-0, item passes, and the second reading and public hearing of this ordinance will be heard on April 6, 2022, at 7:30 PM.
Thank you. Next item.
For the record, Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón has joined the meeting.
Next item.
Yes. Next item is Item 4, Presentation of Minutes for Approval for February 16, 2022, Regular Commission Meeting.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item 5, Public Comments.
Anyone here for a public comments? Seeing none, next item, Madam Clerk.
Item 6, Report of the City Manager.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission. My report is brief. Easter egg hunt preparations are well underway. Cari, my executive assistant, is making a lot of progress with all these preparations. As of today, attached to my report is a projected or estimated cost. Initially, we gave you an estimate of $8,500. We're at about $8,200 with the potential of spending another $200, $250 to finish the baskets. So, we are well within our estimate, and you could read it and ask me some questions at your leisure, but it basically is following the path of previous Easter egg hunts. However, we've encountered price increases in all of the merchandise, as you can tell. So, the next item is, oh, and by the way, the flyers, we don't want to send them out yet until we know that we need Publix to respond to the sponsorship of the refreshments. So, we're holding the flyer. Everything is done, and as soon as we have everything together, we'll send it. We have an estimate from the printers and everything. Quintana prepared it for us. Very nice.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Phase 1 and 2 is giving you an update of the Potable Water Project. Phase 1 is complete with the exception of a couple of items, and I'll let the city engineer report on that when his report comes up. And Phase 1B is also underway in terms of design, and the city will go out to bid in the very near future on Phase 1B. As customary, the engineer and the director of Public Works will be charged with overseeing the bid process, and we will be bringing you the, all the information along with the recommendation for approval sometime in May or June 2022. The next item in my report is we are near the conclusion of the production of records to our independent auditors in connection with the financial statement for fiscal year ended September 30, 2021, and their financial statement in turn, report to the mayor and commission should be ready sometime in May, either the first or second meeting in May. The next item in my report, and I'd like to yield if we could, is a recognition to West Miami Police Department Detective Richard Manner, who was selected as the recipient of the 2021 Florida Police Chiefs Association as the selected officer for the Lee McGee Police Officer of the Year Award. And so, we'd like to, if you could indulge the chief for a couple of minutes to give you an idea of what this award means and, you know, how proud we are of Officer Detective Richard Manner.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Chief, Major.
Major.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and Madam Manager. So, Officer Manner was selected as Officer of the Year, and the major will give you the details.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commission. So, last year in January, it was the beginning of January, Detective Manner was in Hollendale having lunch on his day off, and he was sitting in a restaurant, and he heard what sounded like shots being fired. And when he recognized that's what it was, he immediately started telling all the patrons to get out of the restaurant, take cover, at which point there was a female that was on her hands and knees crawling back into the restaurant that had been shot in the leg. So, Detective Manner relied on his training, and he immediately asked another patron that was there for a belt. And he took the belt, he provided cover for the female while applying a tourniquet, because he didn't know if the bad guys were going to come inside. So, he was able to save this person. When fire rescue got there, they immediately took the belt off and put their own bandages and tourniquets on, but it's because of the actions of Detective Manner that this lady's still alive.
Wow. Amazing. Thank you. Will this be presented to him at the annual chief's dinner?
It's gonna, no, it's gonna be presented to him at the Florida Police Chiefs Association Conference this summer in West Palm Beach.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
I would love to attend if we can. Let me know when that is.
Yes, the chief will put it out.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations to Detective Manner. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 7.
I'm sorry. Madam Mayor, have one thing, just for the record. Our press release is out for the shoe drive. As you know, we were selected by a neighboring community from a beach community. They partner with different cities every year, and this is in honor of National Shoe the World Day. So, we've got some bins in our departments, and I hope we can fill those and collect, you know, lightly wear some used shoes, and we'll take these to Camillo's House. So, we plan to participate in the effort itself and putting everything together and taking it to Camillo's House.
Wonderful. And we put that out on our Facebook and our Instagram and?
It is.
Okay, wonderful.
It is, and we sent out a blast email to all the residents of the city as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item 7, Report of the City Attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney.
Thank you, sir. Next item.
Item A, Report of the City Engineer.
Mr. Alonso, welcome back.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Yeah, the only item to report on really is the closing out of Phase 1A. We did have our final punch list walkthrough on the 10th, I believe. We generated a punch list from that, and then they have 30 days from that day to complete those, those final repairs to close out the project. So, yeah, we walked the whole project, you know, generally, everything looks good like usual, and there's a couple of little things we've got to take care of, so we expect that to be completed before next week and be able to close out the project. And then, look forward to the next phase, Phase 1B. We've already started design on that. We recently just completed the topographic surveys that we needed to complete that, so that's done, and we're moving along there, and I think the timeframe that the manager provided is realistic, so we're hoping to go out to bid sometime in April and be able to award a contract, May-June timeframe, and get started on that next phase. Other than that, that's about it, just business as usual.
Good, good business as usual.
Yes.
Very good. Any questions for the?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item 9, Committee Report, Report of the Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do have something this evening for Report of the Mayor. I have heard that residents are being told that I am not running for mayor because I am term limited out. So, let me clarify what they've been told and tell the truth. We do not have term limits in the City of West Miami, and I did qualify to run for reelection as your mayor. And then, the clerk will be given more information on this at the end of the agenda. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item 10, Unfinished Business, None this evening. Item 11, Under New Business Agenda Item, and Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
We have Items 11, B and C. This is a request for mitigation, and Mrs. Sarah Torres is not present, so I would ask to defer this item until next meeting.
Okay.
And also, Item 11G, which is a report of the Office of the City Manager in reference to EV chargers. We would like to request defer of this item until next meeting, Madam?
Hopefully, by next meeting, we'll have something more concrete.
Okay, so we are going to defer?
B.
Item B, Item C, and Item G.
G, yes.
This became, has become a very short agenda. Okay, in that case, let's move on to?
Item D. 11D, Report by the Chief of Police in reference to Uniform Civil Citation and Request for Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Interlocal Agreement between the City of West Miami and Miami-Dade County, by Chief Avila.
Chief.
Good evening, Chief Carlos Avila, City of West Miami. Good evening to all. This, this came up like in 2016, 17. It was a request from the state attorney and some judges and the public defender's office in reference to civil citations. This program was started in 2007 by the state attorney, Kathy Rundle, in partnership with Juvenile Assessment Center, the JAC. Since then, it was moved into regular use for minor arrests, and most of all, I'm sorry, all the departments at this point, except for us, are involved using the civil citations. This program, the state attorney's office thinks or uses this in lieu of arrest to first-time offenders, offenses that are minor in nature. They're trying to decriminalize, as we all know, the use of marijuana, so you can still at least find them if they have a marijuana joint, if you will, on them. And there's other things here that can help us to continue to have patrolmen patrolling the street, which is more important, you know, for high visibility purposes and stuff like that. When a policeman stops somebody and has to arrest somebody for one of these minor offenses that can be taken care of with just a civil citation, it immediately puts him back out on the road. When they go ahead and they do an arrest, you're down for a good three hours, at a minimum, and that's at a minimum. So, this breaks it down to about 20 minutes, 30 minutes, give or take, depending on how quick they can write a citation, and it's usually somebody that you don't want to ruin their record. This being a civil citation doesn't stay on their record for the rest of their life, impeding them from being able to have good jobs and these kind of situations. There are certain crimes on here that I do not agree with, and we're putting it in our, in our administrative directives that, you know, these are crimes that I will not allow. You will go to jail if you get stopped for doing some of these crimes, for example, loitering and prowling. You've got a guy at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning hanging out in a residential neighborhood with a screwdriver in his pocket, no ID. He ain't getting a ticket. He's going to jail, because at the end of the day, the following day is when the calls come in that houses were burglarized. So, things of that nature, it'll be up to discretionary use. I think this is a good thing. Initially, we didn't think so. The previous chief didn't think this was a good idea, but now seeing that it is working and, you know, the rest of the departments and the entire county are doing this, this is a good thing, and I humbly request that you approve this.
Very good. Any questions for the chief on this item?
No, I'm just glad you're doing it. I have Commissioner Hayman in the county. Every time I see her, she's, she's very aggressively pursuing this, so I'm really glad that I don't have to deal with her anymore on this.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, read the resolution, please.
Yes. Item E, Resolution of Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami Authorizing the City Manager to Execute the Interlocal Agreement between the Miami-Dade County and the City of West Miami that will enable the City of West Miami Police Department to implement an expansion to the civil citation program for other minor criminal offenses, establishing the mechanism to derive fines from citations, but most importantly, the program is primarily to promote public safety in our community. Said program is strongly recommended by the Miami-Dade County Association of Chiefs of Police in Miami-Dade County, providing for Exhibit A, providing for effective date.
Motion.
Second.
Call the vote.
Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Next item.
Item F, Report by the Office of the City Manager regarding the PERC election results for eligible employees of the city's Public Services Department, Office of the City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission. I am here to report to you that we witnessed and participated in the Public Employee Relation Commission, known as PERC election process, which made available to us the election results for those employees under the eligible categories as defined and as agreed by the attorneys that would be allowed to vote for a union by the name of PLE, and that stands for Police Law Enforcement Association. PLE will be, in all likelihood, the bargaining unit representing the members of the Public Works Division. There were 14 eligible employees. Of those, eight voted in favor for the union. So, Mr. Villalobos has already reached out to counsel representing PLE and the membership so that we can see what the next steps will be. In your packet, you will find the election results, and that's just everything we have as of this date.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the manager? Excuse me, none. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item H, Request for Authorization for the Use of the West Miami Community Center as Early Voting Site for the Primary Election of August 23, 2022, and for the General Election of November 8, 2022. And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, the Elections Department has requested the authorization to use the community center as we've done before, as an early voting site for the primary election of August 23. They use in, between they deliver the equipment and they pick up the equipment, they are requesting from the dates of August 8 through August 21, and actually, no, from, since August 1 through August 4, they're gonna build a site. So, August 1 through the 22, those are the dates that they are requesting for the primary election and for the general election of November, they are requesting the dates of October 17 through November 6, 7, November 7. Those are the days that they are asking the city, are requesting to the city to be, for the community center to be used as an early voting site.
Madam Clerk, let me ask you, what will, that is during summer, so we do have summer camp. What will we do with our seniors?
Madam Mayor, in the past, I, what I've seen that's been done in the past is to transfer the seniors to the recreation center, and the same as in November for the November elections. That's what I've seen done, been done in the past.
Okay, so Madam Manager, you'll work with John Michael and be sure that the seniors are safe as well as the children?
Right. However, on August 20, the week of August is a little difficult. I have to work and see when the end of summer camp will be. I mean, it may well be that the kids will already be in school.
Not that early.
But we have to look at the calendar and see when, when school starts. If school has not started, then we would have to speak to the park director to see if we can end summer camp a couple of days before the early voting starts.
I don't want to do that. No, I don't want, that's not.
That's a problem.
That's not a good option.
Right.
Because these parents rely on our summers, summer camp. So, no, that's not an option. We'll have to figure something else out.
We have to figure something out, but, you know, barring just sending home-delivered meals to these seniors for the period of time in question, I don't.
They can move it to another place.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
Why they don't move it to another?
Turn on your microphone.
They can move it to another place.
It all depends on what this commission decides and the instructions you give the clerk that will be conveyed to the Elections Department.
What I don't understand is why don't we just find out when school's starting?
Let me check and see if they have the online calendar. If you would give me a minute.
If I may.
Go right ahead. I have that here already, Madam Manager.
The rec center, the rec center at that time will be under construction.
Correct.
So, they may not be able to go to the rec center, the seniors. It'll be very crowded there with construction going on.
Well, if the kids are in school and all the construction area is obviously roped off, there's no reason for them to go to the back area. We're talking about them having their activities inside the facility.
Correct, but in August, they will be working in the air, right next to the basketball courts. All that has to be demolished and start over.
They can move it to another place.
I'm looking at the school calendar now to see when the first day of school is. I know it's not that early, so. If anybody can find it faster than I can, go right ahead.
I'm trying.
All right, this may be it here, 2022, 2023. Now, if I can read this color coding. August 17, beginning any great period, August 17. Okay, so the children will be?
Will be in school.
Will be in summer camp until August 16? Or do we stop it on the Friday before?
No, we stop it on the Friday before. So, summer camp will officially end August 12.
Correct. So, it will overlap with this.
It will. When does early voting start again, Mary?
August 1.
Okay, August 1, they need to decide to build a site, bring the equipment, everything, so it'll be like, move it.
And we also have to check, did you check the calendar to see venue rentals?
I had already worked with it, yes, with the.
Well, it's for the commission to decide. It's obvious that it will intertwine for a short period of time with the kids at the park.
Okay, so Mr. Penna, you said the seniors will not be able to go to the, to the rec because of construction.
They can go, it just would be perfect.
Yeah, the children, the seniors in construction, all in one place? Doesn't sound like a good plan to me. So, do we have the option of sending the senior their meals at home?
We do. If we can plan ahead, Evelyn will coordinate to have the seniors on the home-delivered meal program for that period of time.
It would have to be for the duration of this, because we don't want the seniors to go to the rec during construction, right? Is that what we're saying, Mr. Penna? Or once the kids are gone?
I believe they can go if we obviously secure the area in the back. They're never in the back. I don't see the?
Noise, you're gonna have everything.
That noise is a factor.
Okay, so it's a possibility we'll be sending their, their meals home?
Right.
From August 1 until August?
12.
What did the clerk say?
12.
No, no, all the way through August 22?
Yes, 27.
Yes.
Almost an entire month.
Yes, if you keep them from coming to the community center, yes.
Right, because what Mr. Penna is saying, because of construction, it may not be the optimum place for them to go. So, we'll need to look at, and will that cost us any more money to do this?
The senior meals are a little bit more expensive, but then again, you're saving on other categories. You don't have to pay the teachers that come to the center.
And the center, correct, the center's.
So, you know, it's gonna be a wash. What I would recommend, and I will tell Evelyn, is in order for our seniors to stay active, is that we maybe augment the number of Tai Chi classes that we have at the, at Cooper Park, that's a, which is, they're going there right now, they're, they're alternating, so we can take them to Cooper Park.
Okay, that's wonderful.
Again, the heat is a factor, the weather will be a factor, so as we get closer to that time, we will plan ahead and see what activities and maybe schedule some field trips for them. That way, they're not back on lockdown for two weeks.
Okay, so this is a plan, then. The kids will not be, the seniors will not be there with the kids during construction. The seniors will have their meals sent home, so I don't see a problem. I don't see a problem, unless anyone else sees something, I don't. Okay?
Okay.
So, Madam Clerk, do we need a vote? We seem to give you our, our okay. What are we looking for here? Bebe, do you request for authorization? Okay, so, did you read Item H? You ready, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, okay. So, all in favor of giving our clerk the authorization to proceed with early voting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No opposed? Madam Clerk, next item.
Thank you.
You have our authorization.
Thank you. Item I, this is a report by the Office of the City Clerk in reference to the end of qualifying period report for April 12, 2022, West Miami elections. And the qualifying periods for the West Miami municipal elections of April 12, 2022 officially ended Friday, February 25, 2022, at noon. The following candidates have qualified. Eric Diaz-Padrón, Rhonda A. Rodriguez. And pursuant to City Charter, Section 303A, the candidate receiving the highest number of vote in each. of votes in each regular biennial election for a group of candidates running for the office of mayor shall hold the office of the mayor for a term of two years. For commissioners, qualified Juan M. Blanes and Luciano L. Suarez. Both candidates were unopposed. In pursuant to city charter, section 303D, in the event there are not more than the necessary number of candidates to fill all expired terms of the council, no election shall be held, and each of said candidates shall be elected to office, and the office of the vice mayor shall be determined by lot. So, the date of the determination by lot has to be determined. And on that note, I would like your recommendation on to, as to one, on what date we should hold the determination by lot. I've presented you with the calendar for your reference. We have elections on April 12th. We have commission meetings on April 6th and April 20th. The swearing-in by charter has to be held on April 18th at 8:00 p.m. I have a recommendation, if I may. I recommend to hold the determination by lot on Wednesday, April 13th, at noon. The reason behind my recommendation is because in the past, in 2014, we had elections, a mayor election, and the determination by lot was done immediately after the report, the polling place was closed, which was at 7:30, 8 o'clock. This time, after 2012, 2014, the requirements for the clerk to be at the polling place was changed, and now, after that, the city clerk has to be at the Elections Department, meaning that on election date, I won't be here. I will be at the Elections Department. For that reason, I recommend to hold the determination by lot on the following day, at noon. It is up to you, I'm recommending this date, but I'm, we are, I'm open to any recommendation by this body.
I don't have a problem with the 13th, but let's hear from the rest of the commission. Does anyone have any concerns or?
The parties involved are Commissioner Luciano Suarez and Commissioner Blanes.
What do you have?
The determination.
The determination by lot.
Always has been that.
Yeah, we're not questioning how we're gonna do it. We know how we're doing it.
Yeah, this is the way to do it.
The question is, the clerk just explained, when do you want to do it? She'd like to know, when do we want to do this?
Well, according with the charter, what she said, you're talking about the charter, sorry? Election night?
It's got nothing to do with the charter. No, the clerk said she will not be there at election night, so she's given us a calendar, which you have in front of you.
Why she's not there at election night?
Because she's explained that she has to be at the Elections Department, so we're going to have to do it on another day. The clerk is recommending that we do it on April 13th, 2022, at 12:00 p.m. Are you in agreement with that?
Well, the date is no problem. For me, no problem.
Okay. Does anyone have a problem with April 13th, 2022, at 12:00 p.m. for the determination by lot for vice mayor?
No, that's good for me.
I'm sorry?
That's good for me.
Wonderful.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I spoke with Commissioner Blanes. He's excused this evening, but he told me, he informed me that he is okay with him this date and time, with this date and time.
So be it. April 13th, 2022, at 12:00 p.m., we will hold the determination by lot. Would that be here at City Hall, Madam Clerk? Up here in the chambers?
Here in these chambers, Madam Mayor.
Here in the chambers, 12:00 p.m. Next item.
Item 12, consent agenda items, none this evening. Item 13, good of the order.
Anything but good of the order? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion, yeah.
Meeting's adjourned. Everyone have a very nice evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, likewise.